Good morning. Today is April 8th. It is now 10:02 to have the Montague County Commission meeting. I'll call to order Eldon Callen.
Here.
Ed Hawkins?
Here.
Great. Okay, at this time we'll stand for silent meditation and then pledge to the flag.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, today we have consents and approvals, and we are going to find out how much money we can give away.
Okay, exoneration. There are 10 listings, $9,885.58 for tax years 2012, '13, '14, fiduciary matters, orders of April 8th, 2015, minutes of March 18 and '25, general county vouchers, $119,003, 1919, coal severance fund, $2,858.86, Camp Muffley, $693.43, Chestnut Ridge Park, $988.24, Chestnut Ridge Park purchasing card, $957.29, assessors valuation fund, $768.20, magistrate court fund, $48, teen court, $11,053.26, law enforcement forfeiture, $1,088.70, for total of $137, 775.17. I have one budget revision moving $45,000 into County Commission line, adding for payment of invoices.
Okay, have a commission, have a like, commission to proceed?
Move to approve.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes three zero. Okay, at this time, we will have comments from the public, and this is also the time when anyone can address the TIF situation or the resolutions that we are about to pass. At this time, I'll open this hearing for public comments. Open. Seeing the mass majority of the people are enjoying the sun outside, and they aren't here, I will close the public comments. Okay, grants. What good news do we have, Renetta?
I have a contract for the Orangeville Community Association for $10,000 from the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program.
Oh, good.
Excuse me, program, and that's for the HVAC updates that they're going to be doing to the building.
Right.
Just asking for the President's signature. You already approved a resolution approving the contract to sign, the President signed the contract back in December.
Okay.
Another motion?
Yeah, since that is the actual contract, let's go ahead.
Move to approve the President signing the contract.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I get to sign the contract.
Okay. The second thing I have is a grant application for the West Virginia Division of Homeland Security in Emergency Management, 2014 EMPG program. What this does is this reimburses the county for part of Mike Wolf and Jimmy Smith salaries, and also some of the reimbursement, or some of, some of the money that we have spent out to operate the emergency management portion of the 911 Center. So this is an application. They have already approved us actually for $53,251, and so we already have the award letter as well. Just asking for the President to sign the application and the award.
Have a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I get to sign.
Okay. We have one reimbursement request for the VOGA program for March of 2014, $4,087.32.
Move to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, get reimbursed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Moving quicker than we expected, we now have Mr. Bobby Doyle to explain some of the three dilapidated properties that we have to deal with.
Oh, we have four.
We now have four.
The first one is with Janet Cutwright on River Road. It's a building that's been tore down, and we've been dealing with this one since May, April of, let's say, April of '14, and nothing's being done. There's some pictures there that you can...
Which one is this?
This one. It's on River Road.
I mean, who isn't?
Janet Cutwright.
Oh.
All we need to do is send a formal complaint. Let's get it cleaned up and, you know.
Is this blowed in?
No, it was a burnout building, and then they start tearing it down.
Do we have to do them individually, or?
Yes, if you, well.
Yeah, we should.
He should.
This is, you want to go to what complaint stage?
Formal complaint.
Formal complaint stage?
Yep.
That moves that we authorize the formal complaint stage on this property, District 7.
On the River Road.
On, on 45, 43 River Road. Thank you.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, the second one is AS subsidiaries. This is on the mild ground. We've been dealing with, this is where the properties are. That was not completed. We've been dealing with this since July 2012. The guy is incarcerated, and we want to do a formal complaint stage to the people taking care of it. I think it's, we want to do a formal complaint so we can send it to the judge and see if we can get something done with it.
Do you have contact with the people that are being informed?
Yes.
Okay, and they're not doing anything?
No.
Is it, this isn't, this isn't the right, where's the, do you have the address of the mild ground property?
Uh, mild ground location.
Would this be 8D-15? Would that be sufficient?
No. Uh, I'm not sure that number, address for the mild ground. We just have mild ground.
Is it on the letter here?
We could use the parcel number. It's right here, the parcel number.
Okay.
Right here, mapping, district, map number and parcel number. Wonder if we choose that.
That's fine.
At least we know which one it is. I move that we authorize going on the formal complaint stage on this property, District 8, map number 8D, parcel number 15.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes.
Now, the next two, I don't know if one commissioner can do anything on this one, but these are Morris Enterprises. First one is at Idlewood Drive, broken windows, open doors. We have been dealing with this one since June of 2014.
Both of them Morris Enterprises?
Yes, sir.
That recused myself. Attorney for Morris Enterprises.
Right.
I wonder why you're going to bring it to formal complaint, otherwise that would have been a meeting. Okay.
By law, the reason why he has to walk out of the room, so he cannot be part of the discussion. So we'll continue.
We were told work should begin in August, then one Morris was in the hospital, and since out of the hospital, we have nothing done on these property, that property. And that was on Idlewood Drive.
Move to go to formal complaints.
Okay, and second, and that's on 816 Idlewood Drive.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes two zero.
Uh, the next one is Morris Enterprise, and it is Main Street of Osage. We've been dealing with this since April 2014. Here's the pictures of open structures.
Okay. Okay, to move to formal complaint stage, that'd be on Main Street, Osage, District 16, map number one.
Move to go to formal complaint.
And I second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes two zero, with Commissioner Callen recusing himself on both situations. You can now go get him. He's allowed back in the room. Okay, we are under, I'm gonna skip since 10:30 in case anyone does choose to show up. I don't foresee a problem, but under correspondence, we have the annual audit, and how was the annual audit?
The only thing that was noted was the OPEB, other post-employment benefits, and that's something that we haven't, every year we get written up for that one. But each elected official, I believe, has received their own copy of the audit. No action taken, no action necessary.
These were taken. Are there any other correspondence?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to unfinished business. Recycling update. I wanted to explain that we are still continuing our efforts twice a month at the Walmart on the Hornback Road. However, since we discussed in the budget that we were moving forward and having to take over and putting such a large amount of finances to this, I'm requesting that we transfer some of the duties over to Anthony Jambroni to oversee the recycling and the litter control and move in that direction, since we come July 1st, we are planning to have it on a weekly basis. We are also planning to consider a website and may, maybe expand the process. And the other thing that I have asked for a recommendation, which, which we had talked about, was possibly have a citizens advisory group or informational group that could make recommendations. So, since there's a transfer of duties, I don't know if that, is a motion needed on that, or is just all three?
I don't think so.
As long as all three of us agree to?
I, I think what we're going to need to do is reevaluate what the, how, how, how much time it's going to take, number one, which I think is going to take an extensive amount of time, which I think is really going to involve a revamping of the position. Now, he's the program and services coordinator for the county, so that's a lot of programs. But if you're going to give him
Yes.
full-time responsibility through recycling program, that's a full-time job in and of itself. I, I, I think what we need to do is, is sort of just let it, let's, let's work with it on work session with, with the staff.
Okay.
As to how we could transfer different duties to different people, or at least on a temporary basis. Do we know, do we have anything more, Ed, from Solid Waste Authority, or are they just, want to just ignore this whole recycling issue thing, or what?
It appears at this time, although Marion County was at the meeting, the last meeting, they still have a possible interest. So even though the equipment from Solid Waste Authority was put out to bid, it would be my suggestion that we at least hold on to the equipment that we own that might possibly be used in tandem with Marion County, because quite frankly, my own opinion, I'd rather give the money to Marion County to help them recycle in Mon County than to continue give money to Republic. But that's my own opinion.
I, I don't think we should have an emotion at this time.
Okay.
Because I'm not sure what the motion should be.
Right, it's just, it's more of a clarification of...
I think we need to work the staff, we need to work with the staff and particularly Mr. Jambroni as to how, how much time this effort's going to take.
Okay, and that's fine, but I did want to bring it up since we were moving in that direction.
Sure, absolutely.
For clarification. You did bring up, Ed, just brought up the other area. We have that equipment, but since the Solid Waste Authority is selling theirs, I was wondering, again, we were waiting until after the meeting, and I, I realize, you know, I, we have a disagreement. I would like to sell the equipment, I don't believe, or sell it to Marion County, which is fine, but I would like to sell our equipment. It's just sitting there, and there's a number of items. Mr. Doyle, you can walk in, please. Perfect timing. We have, we're just generally talking about the equipment for, from the recycling. Are there some things that could be sold, or that we should get? We're deciding what we should do with the equipment. Where are they now, and what are they, are they just sitting?
They're in our location. We moved them.
Okay, and they're just covered and sitting there, or?
Are they open just, you know?
They're just...
We're just waiting to see, but we didn't want to do anything until we were sure what the Solid Waste was going to do, and then I think last meeting, Ed, you said that they were going to liquidate their stuff.
They are.
They're liquidating their...
They're liquidating. There's no use of us to keep that stuff.
And that's a good question that we need to discuss. Should we liquidate the equipment, or do, do we want to keep it on? I would like to liquidate it and put it in the recycling fund.
I don't mind liquidating it. I would like to speak to Marion County.
Sure.
To see what the thrust of their efforts are going to be.
Okay, that would be fine.
They're, they're our best hope for regional recycling.
Okay.
That's why. They do, they do have the ability to do so.
How about if you could come back next week and get an, okay, we'll hold off until next week.
I'll, I'll try.
And that gives us an idea, so we know the direction we're going. Is that okay with you?
Uh.
Okay, good. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that resolves that issue. Okay, setting a date and time. We want to lay the levy Tuesday, April 21st, 2015, at 10 o'clock. Is there a motion to do that?
What time we going to meet here?
10 o'clock on Tuesday, April 21st. We didn't know if you were going to be here. We didn't think you were.
I'm not planning on being here.
I know.
If I can help it.
That's all right. There are two of us who said that we were...
Move, move to set the time at that date, on the 10 o'clock on Tuesday.
I'll second that, since that, somebody, okay, it's been properly moved, set the time, lay the levy on Tuesday, April 21st, 2015, at 10 o'clock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay.
I'm abstaining.
Since you won't be, okay.
Since I'm not going to be here, I shouldn't set your time.
Okay. Also, because of some conflicts, we are requesting that we would like to cancel the County Commission meeting on April 29th, 2015. Do we need a motion for that?
I would move that we cancel the April 29th meeting of this year.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. To cancel the meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Okay, new business. Discussion of appointments to boards and authorities. Committee on the Homeless, Planning, Planning Commission, I didn't see that word, Scheduling Committee. How would, anyone want to open up the discussion on boards?
I'd like to start with Scheduling Committee.
Okay. I've given you some separate documents.
Oh, yeah, I left, I left it.
You did?
Yes.
I just read everything.
No, I left it in mine.
I did too. Sorry.
Sorry.
I did too.
You were so good, you were ahead of us. Yes, you had a list of... Yeah.
Do you want me to get yours?
That'll be fine.
Okay. Yeah, three people right now, volunteers for service on boards and authorities. We have for the Historic Landmarks Commission. You had Lewis Baracus, Hannah Dye, and Barbara Mass, Grassmussen. Okay, now for the ballpark scheduling...
I would like to wait until the Historical Society actually has an appointment, I think.
Okay.
We've just got the bylaws, so I'd like to delay
Oh, okay.
the discussion on the, the Landmarks Commission at this time, okay?
Okay, that's no problem.
If that's no problem.
Um, we, on the...
So you want to, you want to delay the Historic Landmarks Commission until?
Yes.
Further?
Until you meet.
Well, the, the society actually doesn't meet until the third Friday in May.
Oh, okay.
And I would like to see how many, I'd like to get as many applicants as we can.
Okay.
I've asked them to come forward, so that would give them until then, and it's really not of paramount importance.
We're, we're still taking applications
Yes, we're still taking applications.
until May, then, for the Montague County Historic Landmarks Commission.
Okay, and then we'll discuss it after.
Appreciate that, if that's promoted.
Ballpark scheduling, we have two positions. Is that not correct?
We have two, two positions. We have three applicants. I would nominate Bader Gigganbach and Anthony Jambroni.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Good. Okay, that will...
The Development Authority, this is something we need to promote. There's three additional appointments at, at the Development Authority with Holly Chouds, the new director of the Development Authority. She's, she's sort of shaking things up, including changing the meeting time from 7:30 in the morning to, to lunch, which I don't know. I'm not sure about that, because I already have a dozen lunch meetings. I don't know. But I think what we need to do is promote the fact that there are further openings on Development Authority, and we encourage people to, to apply to those positions.
Are they specific?
The second, the second page will show you what's proposed online.
Okay, yeah, there is.
There are about five terms that expire May 5th for the Development Authority, and the three additional members.
Okay.
And Holly's going to reach out to the current members to see if they're willing to continue reappointing.
Well, unless we've done an interview previously, we want to know the people, we want to interview them.
Right.
Now, now, Ed always can request an interview to someone that he, that you have an interview. We normally don't interview people
I understand.
over and over again.
Yes.
But, but if there's anyone you want to request, you have a right to request that.
I have one gentleman coming in next Wednesday for the work sessions.
Okay.
Okay. And these last two, what are this for?
Those were just, those were interest people, but we have Planning Commission opening, Committee on the Homeless.
Committee on the Homeless.
I believe the Planning Commission was to nominate Rick Colbank.
Right.
He, but the Planning, by the way, the Planning Commission does meet tonight, so I'll be going to Planning Commission.
Did, did, I thought we already did Rick Colbank. Didn't we do Rick Colbank?
I sent an application
We sent an application, but we didn't actually formally accept.
No, okay. Well, he's one that I don't need to interview because of that very well.
And he's been in several times to discuss.
He's been on several issues.
So I'll, I'll approve a motion if you would like.
That, well, that was my question.
I would accept a motion.
That was my question. Is that all right with you, Jim?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah.
I would move that, we got a number of openings on the Planning Commission, but it would be good to have an engineer there, so I move that we appoint Rick Colbank to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Committee on the Homelessness.
It's not going to go away.
Since an agreement was made that I will, I know you're, you're busy and we swapped, so I will
Thank you.
assume being on the Committee on the Homelessness again. So if that's acceptable.
I'm going to report Tom Bloom, Committee on Homelessness.
I second that motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Okay, now, we do have the Estoppel Agreement before us at this time, or?
We do not, but
Oh, okay.
I would ask that if it's appropriate, the President be authorized to sign it outside the meeting. I don't have it yet, but it needs to be signed before Friday, and that is for the exit of bankruptcy for Longview. I've contacted Rocky this morning.
But it doesn't, it doesn't need to be signed for us. It needs for them, so they need to get the stuff done.
I contacted Rocky this morning. He wasn't in yet, and I called him, so I'm waiting to hear from him.
I'd move that we authorize the President to sign the proposed Estoppel Agreement if it is received timely, where it has a chance to be reviewed, and if our attorney on the Longview bankruptcy, Rocky Gianola, approves the, the said content.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Moving forward, we're doing great, reports from elected officials. Are there any elected officials or county administrators who would like to speak at this time? Okay, since this is a very quiet meeting, we'll move forward and go to reports from county commissioners.
I am excited, of course, for the opening of the ball field on Friday. Did go to Preston County. Preston County had a meeting with the DOH, two levels of state and then two locals, and this was very good. It, they have 400 more miles of roads than what Montague County has, and they are in the same disrepair. Key element here, I think the public needs to be made aware of, is that the budget that the DOH had reached its zenith or its apex in 1998, so for the past 17 years, they have been laboring trying to keep up with the same amount of money. And this is a money issue, and it's going to have to be addressed, as we sent a letter last week, by the legislature. So hopefully, they will decide to take the bull by the horns and see what we can do for the DOH. I also hope to attend, next Tuesday is the Preston County Chamber of Commerce Dinner, and I will hope to attend that
Good.
just simply to be there as a presence and, you know, just enjoy myself and have a good time. I will be going to Planning Commission tonight, so I won't be at the roundtable.
Right.
The reason is that we have been, I was not promised by the Planning Commission, but 90 days from last month's meeting, that we should have, be able to see our subdivision regulations. So that's why I'm going to Planning Commission tonight, to make sure that we're on track and schedule. What's being done right now is the engineering. Once the engineering report is done, and within it, we should be able to view it.
Thank you. Commissioner Callen. Actually, I don't even have a report either. I just, I agree. I'm very excited about, this is a big week for the county, the County Commission, and for many people in this room who had an idea of coming up with a development over in the western end with the TIF District, and we are hoping that Mother Nature will help us open up the game without the traditional ring. So we're very excited about that. Okay, at this time, the first step is, and I will just not open it up to the public unless we have some specific questions to Mr. Ammon, that we consider for approval by the Commission, the filing of a letter with the West Virginia Development Office substantially in the form presented to the Commission in connection with this meeting, which requests a recalculation of the base tax revenue amount for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Developmental District pursuant to recently enacted legislation and related matters, and the execution and delivery of such letter by the President of the Commission. Is there a motion?
As I reported previously, the, the purpose of the Act was to resolve some deficiencies in the law that was not recognized, because before the University Town Center existed, there was not a stiff state tax increment financing program that had a base amount. This one had a base amount, and it was confusion as to the way the law was, was written, the categories of the law. It's also included reporting. Now, part of that, part of the calculation of the base of that Act required the County Commission to request a recalculation of the base before April 30th. Mr. Tom Ammon is here, who, who drafted that for us. I reviewed it, that it's, I think it's proper and appropriate, but if anyone has any questions, Mr. Ammon's here. But I'd move we approve the, the letter requesting the recalculation of the base.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, and I, I agree. I want to also compliment Commissioner Callen for his diligence, and Jason Donahue, Tom Ammon. There was a, a large group of people that have now resolved this issue, and we can move forward. Very excited to see what's going to develop. So I call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes three oh. Step two, consider an act upon a proposed resolution regarding approval of the Tax Increment Financing Project Plan, the TIF application, with respect to projects and improvements within the County Commission of Mon County Development District Number Four, submission of the TIF application to the West Virginia Development Office, and approval of other items in connection therewith. How is the Commission's response?
I would just like Tom Ammon to explain it generally, what we're doing.
Sure.
Sure. Good morning.
Good morning. Tom Ammon with Steptown Johnson, and we're the bond counsel to the county for the districts. So, you know, we have the two, we have the Excise Tax District and the Property Tax Increment Financing District, and those approvals were put in place, and those districts created back in 2012. We have issued, or the County Commission has issued bonds to finance projects in, in both of those districts. Let's see, 22 million for the ballpark excise tax bonds, 21 million excise tax bonds for the interchange project, 670,000 relating to the interchange, and then two property tax increment financing bonds, 9.6 for the interchange, and 4.5 for the infrastructure work in the district. So all of those projects are proceeding. There's a schedule for completion of those projects, which I can update you on if you wanted to have that information. However, one of the stated goals of the Commission with respect to both of these districts was always the, to further the development of the west side of the interstate. was always the, to further the development of the west side of the interstate. There's a substantial amount of undeveloped property in that area. It lacks basic infrastructure that's needed for development. The initial project plans and applications and approvals that we have in place with the development office and the legislature relates to the existing development for which bonds have already been issued and those projects are moving forward. In order to put the necessary infrastructure in place for the west side, you would need a supplemental application for the excise tax district and a new project plan for the property tax district. And so those have been prepared by the developer and our team. Those have been, we've advertised for a public hearing for today, for those, both of those applications, they've been placed of record with the commission so that the public has an opportunity to come and to review those, both of those applications. The property, the, the new project plan for the property TIF, well, overall, the, the cost estimate for these additional infrastructure improvements is 45, $45 million. Of course, that's just an estimate based upon preliminary engineering studies. Those numbers will likely change as we move forward with all of these projects that we do for TIF districts. So the, what would be permitted as far as projects for the property TIF, it would be your public infrastructure improvements, so roadways, water, sewer, public utilities, that sort of thing. For the excise tax, it would be a bit broader, any permitted development expenditure under the excise tax program. So that would be beyond just public infrastructure. So it gives the county even more flexibility with what could be done with these dollars and the entirety of the district and specifically on the west side. The bonding capacity would be, for the property TIF, would be $50 million in additional bonding capacity to finance these improvements. For the excise TIF, there would be no stated bonding capacity, which is consistent with other districts that have been created. So it would be within the discretion of the county as projects are presented on a case-by-case basis as to whether the county would want to issue bonds for those projects. The existing bonding capacity for the Phase One project, which is the east side, is the 45 million for the excise TIF and 20 million for the property TIF. So there is some room there, I think, on the property TIF to do some additional Phase One projects if that were to be needed on the east side. So that's, that's the basic, and where we are procedurally is a public hearing today which would cover both of the proposed applications and the proposed submission of, of those applications to the development office for consideration of approval. Resolutions of the county which would approve submitting the applications to the development office. There would then be a period of time for the development office to consider those applications for approval. They may have comments, they may request additional information, we don't know that yet. Then, once, assuming those approvals are obtained, the county would then be asked to approve a final order for both districts, which approve the new project plan and the supplement to the excise tax application. So that's probably an overview.
In a nutshell, you two weren't here when this whole thing started, but basically we've made a decision to do things in phases where one builds on another, two builds on another, builds on another. This, this is merely the second phase of what we started, and, and as you all are very supportive of, the west side is what this is all about. The ballpark, it's never about the ballpark. It was nice to have the interchange, but the interchange that didn't go to the west side, we weren't really, we weren't willing to, to spend a lot of time on that. The west side is what this TIF was all about. So this is phase two of, at least two more phases of the development of, of the west side area, the economic development. And it's, it's clearly within, in the scope of the, the, as to what's been proved that can be done in this area. So I would, I, I guess you need to announce really if there's any public comment on this before, but I would, I would, I would also like to, to say you need to go ahead and read the supplemental because
Okay.
I would, one only works if you have, the, the project only works if you have both of them. So we neither, need to either approve both of them or, or not approve both of them. Also, as he said, this is just the first step in the process. Will, the final order will be after the state has an opportunity to review and, and, and comment on, on the application. This is what, this is what we've been working on for the last few months. I come back every once in a while and report that Jason and I kicked this around or that around. So if there's any, if there's any questions, Jason Donahue's also here, I'm sure he could answer any questions.
For the record, I will read both and then open up for a public hearing so no one can say we didn't do that. Again, to consider an act upon a proposed resolution regarding approval of the Tax Increment Financing Project Plan application, the TIF application. With respect to projects and improvements within the county commission of Montague County Development District Number Four, submission of the TIF application to the West Virginia Development Office, and approval of other items in connection therewith. Also to consider an act, an act upon a proposed resolution regarding approval of the Economic Opportunity Development District supplemental application, the supplemental application, with respect to projects and improvements within University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District, submission of the supplemental application to the West Virginia Development Office, and approval of other items in connection therewith. At this time, I'll open up a public hearing if anyone would like to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this issue? Going once, going twice. Since no one chose to speak on this, that says volumes for the support we have, how would the commission like to move now?
I'd move that we approve the proposed resolution on the property tax and the supplemental, the resolution on the supplemental application on the stiff tax for phase two of this project.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passed unanimously, and we're looking forward to the next step.
I have two letters and questions for Secretary Chalmers.
Okay, so we have, okay.
Do you want to take the letters with you?
Yeah, I could take them.
Sure.
Okay. So at this time, sign and then we can move.
And the resolutions will require care.
Is there anything else? Is there anything else before?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, then, besides I asked for a German, I look forward to supporting WVU and all of us at the first game at 6 o'clock on Friday, WVU versus Butler, is it?
Yes.
Butler. So I look forward to seeing everyone there.
And also tonight is the
Oh, yes.
City County, WVU meeting at 6 o'clock.
Wait, city county in Westover.
In Westover.
At, at 6 o'clock, and I know you'll be at the planning person. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now adjourned. Thank you very much.